Hi and welcome to the next edition of reclaiming my mind. I am your host, Jessica Vaughn, also president of the Democratic Progressive Caucus of Tampa Bay. And today, as we continue our municipal elections, we are lucky enough to have the second candidate in District Seven, which is a specific district candidate, Quinton F. Robinson. Thank you so much for joining us today, Quinton.
Well, thank you for having me. It's a pleasure being here.
Oh, thank you. All right. So what I like to do, and people are kind of getting used to the format is before we jump into all the political stuff we need to talk about, tell me a little bit about yourself, your background, where you grew up. So people get to know, you know, about you as a person.
Great. Will do. Thank you so much. My name is Quinton F. Robinson, born and raised here in Tampa, Florida. The historic West Tampa neighborhoods to be specific, a graduate and alumni of Hillsborough Senior High School. Also matriculated through Florida A&amp;M University, where I obtained my degree in psychology, bachelors, as well as a master's divinity from Luther Rice University and Seminary in Lithonia, Georgia. I got involved in politics, was more was more so inspired and got to get involved in politics through the candidacy of first African American president, Barack Obama. That was very eye opening for me and the opportunity that I had to knock on doors and canvas for something that was quite historic to our nation. And that's when I, once I got involved, it's I was bitten by a bug and I've been actively involved in in politics ever since. But as a youth, my father, when I wasn't on my best behavior, as punishment, my father used to have me watch C-SPAN and also read a book and write a summary about what I read. Now, C-SPAN at the time was not interesting to me. It was actually punishment. But as I grew and into my adult life, I began to understand what my father was instilling into me at that time. And that was to have a grasp and have an understanding of how politics works, how our Congress works and the decisions that are made and impacts our day to day living. And I would hope as a candidate now that I would be able to make those decisions that will increase quality of life for all.
Okay. So now you said you went to seminary school. Are you a minister of some sort?
No, no, I'm not ordained, just studied. So ministerial studies, I have volunteered at a number of different churches throughout the area. But I've also participated in prison ministry here locally at Orient Road Jail. This is before they transitioned to Falkenburg. I've traveled to many of the prisons throughout our state to do the same. I've spoken at various churches throughout the area, but no, I'm not an ordained minister. But I do believe and I'm a man of faith and believe in the scriptures of the Bible. And that I believe those are things that have caused me to be a principled man and and also do my best to live a righteous life and hope that I'm sharing that with those that I come in contact with as well.
All right. Well, we will talk more about that a little later on because I'm always super interested in how people manage faith with politics. But um, let's talk a little bit about what I had read. Now, correct me if I'm wrong. Were you at one point the president of the Black Caucus? Did I read that correctly?
That's correct. I did serve as president of the Hillsborough County Democratic Black Caucus for about one year.
And tell me a little bit about that experience because you said that, you know, getting involved in 2008 was eye opening. I'm sure being the president of the Black Caucus was eye opening as well. So if you wouldn't mind, share a little bit about that with me.
Yes, ma'am. So the Black Caucus is renowned throughout Hillsborough County for a lot of its efforts as well as getting out to vote, souls to the polls and even lobbying different legislators in Tallahassee about some of the issues that impact the African American community here locally and statewide as president. Like, one of the things that I was looking to expand was its membership. And it has expanded since my president, me presiding with the Hillsborough County Democratic Black Caucus. It's a very great organization. And if you're not actively engaged and you're African American, I do believe that this is something. Well, you don't have to be African American to be a part of it, but I do think that it educates, it informs. And it's a way for you to actually get involved in grassroots organizing and have a better understanding of how politics works and how it impacts our day to life.
Right. Yeah, I agree. As president of the Progressive Caucus, just getting membership is always a struggle. But I'm really glad. And for people who don't understand, who might be listening, caucuses generally work inside the Democratic Party or Republican. I think they have caucuses. I'm not sure, party to engage members on different issues. Sometimes they're identity based, such as, you know, whether you're African American or Hispanic, have a disability. And sometimes like with the environmental, the progressive caucus, they're issue based. So now that we know a little bit about your background, what I like to ask all candidates is what prompted you to want to jump in the specific race that you're in?
Well, thank you. Excellent question. So I reside presently in University Square, which is south of Fowler Avenue, maybe about 10 blocks away from University Mall between 22nd and 15th. I've lived in the area now since maybe 2012. I was renting a property on 112th Street, relocated from there to 113th. And my wife and I, after we were married, we actually purchased our first home in University Square. Didn't want to live, leave the city. I didn't think county, didn't want to live in the county because both of our places of employment were actually within the city. And you know, as well as I do about the transit problems that we have locally. We had to take that into account when we were actually searching for our home.
So tell me about your district. I know that when I went to your website, that you have an actual map and it kind of defines the district. So for our listeners, tell us where the boundaries of that are.
So District Seven is, 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 is pretty massive. So it extends as far south as Rolet Park, which is the northeast corner of Sulfur Springs. It extends as far north as New Tampa County Line Road, as far west as Forest Hills, Armenian Bush Boulevard, and as far east as 52nd Street, where the City of Temple Terrace and the City of Tampa meet. And that's the Terrace Park neighborhood.
All right. So you are devoted in this district. And what prompted you to want to run now for this race specifically?
Well, I saw a need for servant leadership and not just in District Seven, but on city council and in the mayor's office as well, where we're coming around a corner that's going to be very impactful for the next 10 or 15 years with the selection that voters are going to make in the upcoming election on March 5th. And specifically as it relates to North Tampa, there has been, it has been overlooked and underserved vastly for about maybe 10 to 20 years. I don't think that's specifically my opponent's fault, but it has been something that has, this particular area has been swept in the rug for many of years. And I believe that it's time for this particular area to be recognized and maybe receive some of the benefits that a lot of the other neighborhoods within the City of Tampa receive as well. I believe that revitalization is needed in the area, economic development is needed in the area as well as jobs. So this is a corridor that we can develop to make it more inviting. Nebraska Avenue has a history. There's a documentary that exists about, about Nebraska Avenue. And I just don't think that that's the, the best light to have this particular area in. And hopefully, as your next city council member, I can do something about that.
Okay. So I looked at your website, as I mentioned before, which I appreciate when candidates have websites. And it has a platform on it, which again, I appreciate. So let's talk a little bit about your platform. So it seems like the centerpiece of your, your campaign, from which I can gather, is empowerment, right? Your, your entire platform seems to be based on voter empowerment and empowerment towards the district. And it breaks down into a few different categories. So before I kind of jump into them, why don't you tell me a little bit about your vision and your platform under, you know, the empowerment plan for District Seven?
Right. So empowerment is a slogan that I've chosen just to make my candidacy more inclusive with just what we experience in everyday life. Oftentimes, we are inundated with negative things in the news.
So you mean, when you say we, you just mean everybody?
Right, everybody. Right, right. Inclusive. So and with that, being empowered is a slogan to get individuals more actively engaged in, in politics, more actively engaged in their communities and, and, and actually having a voice for their concerns and their interests and having those things addressed by those that we elect to represent us.
Okay. So I'm looking under your platform and we're talking about economic development first. You know, and you talk about essentially getting a community redevelopment area for a specific part, which means essentially from what I understand that what happens is then the money that that area generates is kind of earmarked to go back into that community. So it's to help it be more self sufficient and, and support itself. So tell me a little bit about which part of the district you want to get that for.
Well, the, my understanding is that a community redevelopment agency has already been proposed for this particular area. My understanding is that it's sitting on our Board of County Commissions, waiting for a vote. But more than likely waiting on whomever our next mayor will be, he or she. For this to actually be something that's actually included into or listed with the other CRAs or community redevelopment agencies that presently exist within the City of Tampa. But yes, you're absolutely correct. What it does is it, it detours or it lessens blight, slum, and also develops affordable housing in this, in these particular areas. So there are a lot of CRAs that presently exist. However, some of them don't even meet these particular qualifying guidelines any longer. Now, a community redevelopment area or agency, specifically in North Tampa, would look, it would actually encompass two different districts. So it'd encompass District Five, which is the Sulfur Springs area, and also District Seven. And District Five and District Seven are.
And six, I think a little bit of six is in Sulfur Springs. Sulfur Springs is a little bit of six.
I'm not sure as to what, what end of, what, where does the boundary end for District Six?
I believe it starts like a little bit past Waters and Nebraska area. So it encompasses some part of Sulfur Springs. But anyway, that doesn't matter. Sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Right. Well, the, the proposed, the proposed boundaries that I've listed on my website, votrobinson.com. I will start at Nebraska Avenue, North Nebraska Avenue, which is soon as you cross the bridge and you see Sulfur Springs pool to your left. It would go east to I-275, up to Fowler Avenue, over to East along Bush Boulevard. Wouldn't, it wouldn't include Bush Gardens or Adventure Island. However, it would include the neighborhoods of Terrace Park as well. So pretty much all of Sulfur Springs, all of University Square, Briarwood, or North Tampa, as well as a portion of Terrace Park as well. And once the research is compiled, I believe that it would be adequate for a CRA in the event that they find slum, they find blight, and it's the area that's in need of affordable housing.
Okay. So just to be more clear, what is exactly defined as slum? Because I'm not sure what the definition of that would be.
Well, that's a good question because that will be a definition that was probably comprised from our state legislature. So I mean, we could probably do it, look in the Oxford Dictionary for the definition, but that definition may not necessarily be the same definition.
That's defined by the state legislature. Okay. So I was looking over more of that and, you know, it looks like, you know, that's, I mean, I support that definitely having communities, especially areas where they struggle economically, be able to invest in themselves and, you know, benefit themselves. And so I also saw that you're interested in, it looks like trying to recruit, you know, tech companies, health manufacturing, grocery corporations, specifically to our district for employment opportunities. Where I was kind of a little bit, would love some more clarification on is four, where it talks about supporting and advocating for the introduction of new sister cities in the country of India and the continent of Africa. I thought that was interesting and I hadn't seen that before. So I want to know how you felt that related to District Seven a little bit more.
Right. Well, presently, our city does have sister cities throughout the world. None of them are on the continent of Africa or in the country of India or South Asia. The reason that I wanted, I'm willing to support and advocate for the introduction of these two, or new sister cities from these particular areas is because of the demographics that make up District Seven. There's a huge population of East Indian residents in District Seven, as well as business owners. A lot of the businesses along Fowler Avenue are owned by East Indians. And there's also a huge population, well, a growing population of Africans that reside in District Seven as well. And I think that having a sister cities in these particular areas or countries would be more diverse and inclusive of cultures that actually make up the melting pot of District Seven and our beloved City of Tampa.
So I'm not familiar with our cities, our sister cities. I hadn't heard that before. And what exactly are the guidelines for that? And what does that mean other than?
Well, this will be something that would have to be.
Like, where do we have a sister city?
Well, I do know that there's one in Brazil.
Oh, okay.
I believe there's one in Italy. I can't think of the city right off hand. There's a few in South America.
Now, does it mean like we have a majority of similar workforces? So people can easily transfer? Does it mean that we have different established relationships? I'm not.
Well, I believe the, I believe it's something that's established through the mayor's office. I'm not sure as to what the guidelines are or the parameters to what makes a sister city, a sister city. However, I do believe that inclusion and diversity is key. And that once we have an opportunity to learn about each other's cultures, that that makes us more, more of a rounded person because we have an opportunity to experience various cultures. And, and learn from those cultures as well.
All right. So tell me about the next kind of empowering pillar of your platform. Is it okay to call it a pillar?
That's fine.
Where we're talking about empowering public safety. Tell me a little bit about what you have envisioned for that.
Right. So the, my plan to empower District Seven has six points. And under each of those points, there's four specific action items that I would like to address and get accomplished as, when elected. And I just believe that an informed voter is an empowered voter. Oftentimes, you know, we vote for candidates because of name recognition or because of their financial coffers. And I, and, and, and I believe that informing voters is, is a way for them to actually make a conscious decision about who they want to represent them and their interests. My second point, or the second point on the, on the, on the plan to empower District Seven as it relates to is empowering public safety. First point is support and develop the, the implementation of a, the City of Tampa Human Trafficking Advisory Board to designate zones and prohibit human trafficking within the City of Tampa and Hillsborough County. So presently, as of late, in the news, there has been a, there was recently a operation in St. Petersburg, Florida, where a few were arrested and charged with human trafficking. And, and the individual that they were trafficking was an adolescent and a male child. And it's unfortunate that these things are taking place in our modern day society. When reading, just doing some research as it relates to what the federal government sees about this, they are comparing this to modern day slavery. And I believe that this is something that the community needs to be aware of, that's taking place in our communities and what human trafficking looks like and how we can detour those things and actually keep these things out of our communities and I keep our community safe and, and also providing a wraparound services for individuals who may have been involved in some type of a human trafficking incident.
Yeah. I love the wraparound services idea because so many times people, you know, want to look at just the problem in quotation marks and not deal with the aftermath. But from what I understand, and I could be wrong, the city has recently, within, when I say recently, within the last year, essentially, in order to address what they saw as the, an issue with human trafficking, put stricter regulations into, let's say, the massage parlors and some of those areas where there's somebody who comes in every so often and checks off a log and basically, you know, kind of oversees a police officer. They've put more regulations and scrutiny into the areas where, you know, victims of human trafficking might be more likely to work or where they would be able to find instances of that. So would this be something on top of that to kind of, I'm not sure, are we not designated as an area with that right now? Or is this something that we would want to expand on what we just passed? Or what would be your vision as far as that's concerned?
Right. Well, I don't believe that the City of Tampa or Hillsborough County has designated, it's, has been designated as a human trafficking free zone. I do believe that it's needed. And as it relates to human trafficking, I do understand that there have been some ordinances that have created protections or protections for individuals caught in, 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 in human trafficking. Or in, in even with that, however, with human trafficking, it's, it's not a, we may see it as quote unquote prostitution, but it's much deeper than that. We're talking about the capture of, or the, what word do I want to use? We're talking about, and, and, and this has no specific demographic. This is, it, it could be Hispanic, it could be white, it could be black, no age preference. I mean, so there's, there's a lot of things that, that, that are, are considered to be human trafficking that we look at or define as something else. And I believe that that's where the, the educational part comes, not just from just, just, just designating the zone, but also teaching and empowering and, and having a understanding within our local citizenry as well about what human trafficking looks like. Maybe you had a family member that's involved in human trafficking. So things like that, I believe it's, it's important that we understand what human trafficking is, that it has no bounds to who it may impact. And mostly, if it's, as you mentioned with massage parlors, or, or it could be, you know, an adult nightclub, so to speak, those things may happen, but these things are usually taking place outside of an established business.
Right. And I think that's a good point to make because I think a lot of sex workers felt that this was, you know, a smokescreen really to put more regulation in so that more people were paid within our government to, you know, kind of oversee this. That's really, you know, kind of a smokescreen to, to use it as a way to, you know, either crack down and attack sex workers or, you know, make more money by causing more regulation within the, you know, the sex worker industry. So it's a complicated issue like most issues are when we start to talk about them, but I thought that was interesting to see on your platform.
Well, thank you.
So I wanted to say, was there anything else in public safety? I saw something about, what was this yardam sensor?
Right. So point two on my platform, again, this is available on our website at votrobinson.com. Point two was to support and advocate for the reduction of gun crimes within District Seven, which will support and advocate for funding a two-year pilot program for TPD to obtain spot shooter application, which is a satellite that's able to track gunshots when they're fired. This presently exists after speaking with the chief of police, actually the deputy chief of police for a patrol. This currently exists in East Tampa. I would like to see something like this citywide. Shootings are not, are, are not, shootings take place throughout our, our locale. It could be Palmacea. As of late, we just recently seen a shooting there. We've recently had the shooting in Soho. And what really brought this to, to light for me was that I had a childhood friend that lives in Castle Heights, which is in North Tampa. Him and his girlfriend were both murdered on Labor Day.
Oh, my God. I'm sorry. Sorry to hear that.
And it's, and it's unfortunate that this is taking place. I do believe that if we have the spot shooter application citywide, maybe this will assist the police to, to have a faster response time to whether they could possibly catch the, the assailant that's involved in these type of crimes. The second recommendation would be for the yardam sensor, which is a sensor that's placed in the handle of a police officer's firearm. So in the event that the police were to getting into altercation with a assailant or perpetrator, and they, that officer were to, was to lose their firearm, that firearm will be disabled with this technology. So in event that the assailant was able to pick up that gun and attempt to fire it at the officer, the gun will not work because the sensor only works when it's in the possession of that officer. So I believe that both of these technologies would both protect our officers as well as our citizens.
And I love people looking at technology for solutions. Now, my question, especially as someone who lives in this district, although we are talking countywide, is what kind of price tag is on this kind of technology? What are we looking at for budget wise?
Well, the, the, it's, this is only a proposal. I can't, as far as what it will cost to, what it will cost the police department to actually develop these techno, or to obtain these technologies. Right. And, and just for the record, I haven't been endorsed by either of these companies. Neither one of them have given me any money. I saw the technologies and I thought that this would be great to have in the City of Tampa to protect our citizens as well as our sworn officers.
Well, thank you for making that clear because you never know these days.
Right. And, and in addition to that, this is only being proposed as a pilot program.
Okay. Tell me about your empowering revitalization.
Right. Well, this, this could tie back into the Community Redevelopment Agency in North Tampa as well. I'm looking to support and encourage it as well as advocate for the beautification of Nebraska Avenue. If you've ever traveled down Nebraska Avenue between Bush Boulevard and Fowler Avenue, all of the medianes are concrete. I would like to see landscaping and some possible trees as well to make it more inviting for companies or businesses that want to come to the area and do business. And also to detour some of the activity that may take a place, that take place along Nebraska Avenue. If you've lived in Tampa or Florida for more than 10 years, you probably have a working understanding of what takes place on Nebraska Avenue. And it continues to go further and further north. So if we could, if we could actually revitalize this area, bring in companies or small business owners that wants to do business along Nebraska Avenue, I think that it would be as seamless as what's taking place in Tampa Heights. I'm sorry, in Simmo Heights as well. And we can actually have a seamless and a very nice looking program or beautification or aesthetics along Nebraska Avenue from downtown Tampa to Fowler Avenue.
Okay. And then we have empowering transit, which there was one thing I wanted to ask you about, which I've had a lot of discussion with just in general with the different city council or mayoral candidates is, as you mentioned, everybody's talking about transportation. It affects every part of our community regardless of where you live. And there's been some debate back and forth between what is a more viable option, leasing the existing CS extracts or talking about light rail. It generally seems to be one or the other. And I've gotten mixed signals. Some candidates who are very strong in transportation say, oh, the lease would be too much. Light rail is much more affordable. And then other candidates who say, oh, light rail is astronomical. We already, you know, we can negotiate these leases with these tracks that we already have. So I'm kind of a little bit confused about which one is a better choice. And I noticed that yours kind of talks about both. So I was just trying to get a feel for if you. And I noticed that yours kind of talks about both, so I was just trying to get a feel for if you had a preference of what you think would be a better option.
Right, well, um, I'm all for transportation. Um, I did vote in favor of the, uh, once in sales tax for transit.
Thank you.
And the, my understanding of, of light rail and, uh, as you're elected official, this would not be a, uh, there wouldn't be a transportation plan that I would be able to propose. Uh, this will be something that comes from our mayor. Uh, but as it, as it, my understanding, as it relates to light rail. So if you're going to develop light rail, uh, you're gonna have to either bill your tra- bill your own tracks or you're going to have to rent or lease the existing tracks. Uh, within the past two weeks or so, uh, CSX has been, uh, replacing a lot of the rail, uh, track or, well, I'm not sure, the planks that sit under the tracks as of late, recently, uh, within the North Tampa community. So they're preparing for something. Now, with that preparation, uh, my biggest concern is that if we develop light rail, uh, the majority of the rail that exists for CXS, XS, exists in the urban core. So that's from downtown Tampa, would expand through East Tampa, uh, it goes into West Tampa, uh, and as far north as the North Tampa communities. And I believe that the track, actual, CSX tracks actually end, uh, somewhere behind, uh, Pepsi-Cola, which is, uh, McKinley, uh, from Fowler Avenue, or McKinley is also Forty Fifth Street, once you cross over Bush Boulevard. Uh, so that's where the track ends. So, uh, some of the plans are taking place, and you've, and you've probably, uh, are well, well aware of this, is that the, to connect downtown Tampa to USF. Well, if you're gonna connect downtown Tampa to USF, are you gonna build a rail? Are you gonna rent a rail? So my biggest, biggest concern is what's going to hap- happen to the, uh, neighborhoods, uh, that when the light rail are in need of stops. And that goes to eminent domain. Eminent domain is the, uh, process that the, our municipality will utilize to purchase or acquire, uh, private properties. And my concern, and what I would advocate for is to make sure or ensure that those residents or business owners, uh, who are impacted by eminent domain receive a fair market value for their property.
Right, absolutely, cuz sometimes they just take it.
Right, we don't want that to happen. Uh, we want, we want people to be able to relocate to another area, hopefully within the city of Tampa, uh, that will be conducive to them, uh, as it relates to employment a- as it relates, relates to them, uh, for transportation as well. Um, all for a light rail, uh, my, again, my biggest concern is just to make sure that residents and business owners, uh, who may be impacted by eminent domain, receive a fair and equitable, uh, market value for their.
Which is good, not a lot of people are talking about that component of it. So let's talk, um, about your next platform, um, pillar that I, I don't know if I'm using the right word. It's just for lack of a better word. Is there a bullet point? I don't know.
A point.
Point.
Pillar, that's fine, right. Point plan, right.
Is empowering our environment.
Right.
Um, which, you know, I, I generally ask more of as we go into the issues, but since you have it here in your, your, uh, point plan, tell me a little bit about, um, your vision as far as, um, specifically our district and the environment is concerned.
Right, well, my first point is to support and advocate for tree planting and landscaping at our existing, uh, stormwater retention ponds within District Seven. Uh, there are a lot of retention ponds in North Tampa. Uh, and I believe that the aesthetics can be changed if we, you know, make sure that our stormwater department continues to landscape them properly. And also, uh, uh, plant trees, uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be an oak tree, uh, it could be some other type of tree. Uh, but, I mean, I think that that will bring the, the aesthetics in that particular neighborhood that has a retention pond. Uh, it will make that, uh, particular neighborhood, uh, that much more livable, uh, and offer a green space as well. And with, you know, the current, uh, debate with tree mitigation, uh, in the Nor- New Tampa area, uh, this is a way for us to actually, uh, plant trees and, uh, you know, assist with our uh, deterring, uh, pollution in, in the area, uh, and, and actually having, uh, more green spaces and more, uh, livable and, uh, sustained, uh, sustained communities, uh, that understand the impact of, uh, the impact that, uh, our environment is, is facing presently.
So one of the things I've noticed is, you know, part of what it looks like, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that for District Seven, it's a little pro-business, right? Trying to attract businesses into these communities to help making them sustainable and invest into them. Um, so with, you know, larger businesses, whether it's small or large corporations, there are environmental impacts. So what would be kind of the idea as far as, I know we're talking about planting trees. In the future, you know, there are initiatives to have cities try to eventually go a hundred percent renewable. Um, you know, as far as energy is concerned, what would be some of your ideas, you know, um, that talk about offsetting? You know, if we do attract all of these businesses, some of the, um, environmental impacts that will have, you know, as business develops in our district.
Well, um, I mean, as, as it relates to, uh, corporations or businesses coming to our area, um, I'm sure that there's, uh, something that's outlined within any development as to how many trees you need to plant. What, how big that tree can be, you know, along those lines. Uh, as it relates to renewable energy, uh, I mean, we have a port, uh, that's, uh, utilized. However, I believe that we should be developing our own, uh, source of energy. Uh, we can possibly develop a solar energy farm, uh, right at the port. You know, on some of the land. Uh, I mean, this is, of course, just a, a, a idea. But this is something that will probably have to be discussed between the Board of County Commission, uh, Port Authority and the state of Florida to see if this is something that will be a viable option to produ- produce a renewable energy, uh, here in our city.
But it's something that you think is important.
I do believe that it's important, definitely.
So then we come to quality of life, and I will say that I am very excited to see that you are the only candidate that I've interviewed that has fifteen dollars an hour for city employees built into your platform. Um, but I can tell you, I've been holding a lot of candidates accountable for this. Half of them don't even know what the fight for fifteen is, or that there is a movement to ma- raise minimum wage that far. But the information that I'm getting is, um, maybe not exactly in these terms, I'm gonna use my own words, that the city of Tampa is eventually gonna enter a budget crisis within the next two years. That we've already had financial cuts and the budget has been very tight. And when you talk about a lot of things that haven't been passed, it's because we're trying to figure out how to use our resources. And then within two years, we have bonds coming up that we're not sure we're gonna be able to pay for. So what I've been told is, while these candidates may support an incremental, um, minimum wage raise or some sort of minimum wage raise, that honestly, the idea of making all city employees up to fifteen dollars an hour just isn't in the budget plausible at this point. What would be your reaction to that, since it's in your platform?
Right, so my proposal is to support and advocate for the increase of minimum wage to fifteen dollars, specifically for hourly, hourly employees. Uh, not salaried employees, so, and I'm not sure as to, uh, which departments hire, uh, individuals hourly. Uh, but those, my recommendation, recommendation will be for those individuals who, uh, receive a hourly wage versus those who are salary. Uh, now, as it relates to, uh, finding, uh, the funding sources for our debts that are coming due, there's two CRAs, uh, and this is not popular or sexy for me to say this, but there's two CRAs that exist. One is in downtown Tampa and one is in Channel Side. Well, if you review the guidelines of what makes a Community Redevelopment Agency, downtown Tampa and Channel Side no longer even qualify for those particular incentives.
Right.
Um, so if we, or whoever our next mayor would be, he or she, uh, would sunset those particular, uh, CRAs in downtown Tampa, these are funds that can actually go to our city's, uh, general revenue. And these monies can actually be utilized to pay off some of our debts. And I'm saying four years from now because that gives ample time for developers, uh, to make their plans, to come into Tampa and to actually develop, uh, those particular, uh, structures that they want to see in downtown Tampa. And they will still be able to benefit from the CRA being existence during that timeframe.
So would you say that in the priority of things, if you had to look at the budget, even if it meant working with the numbers, your priority would be raising, um, hourly wages for our city workers to fifteen dollars an hour?
Of course.
Okay, um, so now, uh, is there anything else in there that I didn't cover that you wanna talk about?
Uh, the point two under empowering quality of life is to, uh, support and advocate for the modernization of the facilities and grounds at Copeland Park, uh, and its community center, uh, to include a kitchen, a computer lab, rebuild, rebuilding of the dilapidated boardwalk that currently exists and lighting for the exist- existing trail. Uh, the Copeland Park, uh, is named after, uh, Lloyd Copeland, who's actually, I believe he's the first, uh, represent- uh, city councilman for District Seven. Uh, he's actually served as a mayor, uh, in, in the city of Tampa as well. Uh, so I believe that this particular park, uh, has a strong history, uh, in North Tampa. And it's, uh, uh, both good and bad. And I believe that, uh, if we, I mean, at one point, uh, Parks and Recreation Department advertised kayaking at Copeland Park. Well, you can't kayak on, uh, with no water. Uh, so we have a wetland at Copeland Park with no water and a boardwalk with, that you can't walk on because it's, uh, falling into, uh, the, uh, the, uh,
Wetland.
The wetland, right. I'm sorry, so yeah, it's falling into the wetland. So these are, these are a couple of things that I would like to see replaced, uh, and, and, and fixed in, in Copeland Park. And eve- even if we were to modernize, uh, the community center at Copeland Park, uh, this will actually be an opportunity for the city to, uh, generate a revenue from the park as well, uh, being that this could be utilized as space for rentals, for, uh, birthday parties or a, you know, a, uh,
Any event where people wanna gather, yeah, where they rent the shelters, yeah, absolutely. Um, and then it also says here, um, encourage and implement a point system for contractors and vendors who are applying to do business with the city that employs individuals with background challenges.
Right, so, um, for about seven years, I, I founded and I presided over a nonprofit uh, called Reentry Cooperative of America that assisted, uh, returning citizens, uh, with, uh, employment, housing as, as well as, uh, education, uh, whether it was a skill or a trade, uh, or wanting to go back to college, depending on what type of charges they have. Because of course, uh, financial aid is not given to everyone if they're convicted, uh, of, of specific crimes. So, um, what I would like to see, uh, and this was something that I proposed with my mentor, uh, Pastor Joe Johnson, uh, with the Hope Coalition, uh, we, uh, pushed for City Tampa, uh, to initiate what's called Ban the Box. Uh, now, Ban the Box, it removes the question from applications that ask, have you ever been convicted of a felony? And it gives a, uh, a, a, an applicant the opportunity, uh, to sell themselves an interview versus being, uh, disbarred from an interview because they had to check a box and list their, uh, criminal record. Now, what I would like to see as far as the point system is for vendors or contractors that are doing business with the city of Tampa, uh, to actually share with the city of Tampa, do they hire, uh, these individuals? Do they hire individuals, uh, with back- background challenges? And how, uh, and, and if so, uh, that they would get a, you know, some type of, uh, uh, a point, would be developed to say, well, this company, uh, is gonna be awarded this contract. Uh, however, we have another company that can be awarded the same contract, but they actually hire individuals and put, uh, these type of individuals in, that meet this particular demographic back to work as well.
So let's play devil's advocate here. For, um, listeners, I mean, for me, when I, I listen to that, you know, the reason that that is important is there are so many communities that are, um, penalized or who are, um, held to a different standard when it comes to criminal justice. And so a lot of times, it's not really a matter of whether people are more criminal or prone to criminal activity. It's the fact that they live in more marginalized communities where they don't have access to as many resources of the judicial system or where they might be, you know, um, more prone to, um, be accused of things, you know. It's to kind of offset some of the, uh, policies that have, you know, actively worked against these communities. For, but for people who don't understand that, you know, per se, that holistic background, they might just hear, why do you wanna hire criminals? Why do you wanna make sure that's a priority? Why would we want that? So what would be your answer to that?
Right, well, uh, it's, uh, hiring a individual that's a returning citizen or has a, a background challenge. Uh, it's an investment in public safety. Uh, if it, if an individual is employed, uh, they're less likely to commit a crime. Uh, and hopefully, uh, them being, you know, less likely to commit a crime, a crime, uh, protects all of us. Uh, and I believe that that will increase our public safety. Uh, and this is something that would have to not only be looked at from a, uh, a city council perspective or, or, or from a perspective of a nonprofit, but just our community as a whole. Uh, how can we actually come together to make sure that we have, uh, public safety that's working for all of us? And not only that, but that we're doing away with, uh, discrimination and actually assisting individuals returning to our community who want to be, uh, model citizens and actually be a, uh, asset uh, to our society versus a liability.
Okay, so thanks for that. Um, anything else, um, regarding your platform before we move on?
Uh, just to go back to, uh, empowering our environment, uh, Tampa, the city of Tampa has uh, decades old, uh, infrastructure as it relates to, uh, waste and stormwater. Uh, those things need to be replaced. These are pipes that are probably a hundred plus years old. Uh, and now, uh, I believe that it's high time that we actually fix these things to where that weaken the tour some of the flooding that we see in a lot of our communities throughout the city of Tampa.
Thank you, yeah, that's important. It sounds like flood, uh, stormwater and what's going on underneath our city is a much bigger concern than people are realizing. A lot of candidates have talked about that, so I'm glad that it's something that you're aware of and in your platform. So now I'd like to move on to what other candidates have dubbed the lightning round, where, um, I just kind of get your feedback on certain, um, issues that are important. I know that you, uh, filled out a application with the Progressive Caucus. So some of the things I might ask you about, um, it sounds like you've already kind of addressed, but I would just wanna get, you know, your feedback on some of those things. Um, cuz there were some things I, I loved and then some things I had some questions on. So let me just start with, um, affordable housing. I know that that's at the top of everybody's kind of platform these days, along with transit. So when, I've heard so many different ideas and solutions for dealing with the affordable housing crisis that we're facing here locally. What are some of your ideas, um, it could be district, uh, specific or even city, citywide, to talk about managing the crisis of affordable housing that we have here?
Well, thank you for the question. Affordable housing is a, a hot button issue. Um, in, in, in my travels here, I was listening to talk radio and they were discussing, uh, this on the state level, uh, about the, how the monies are actually taken out of the trust. Right, out of the trust and then put into general revenue to be, you know, go to, you know, different budgeted items uh, throughout the state of Florida.
I'm not even sure how that's legal, how they can raid that money earmarked for that, but anyway.
Right, well, I mean, it, it's, it's, how do we develop a plan, uh, locally to address affordable housing and actually build our own coffer for affordable housing in the future? Uh, the biggest thing is, where do we find the money to fund this coffer if this is something that we wanna do locally? I propose the ending of the CRAs in downtown Tampa and Channel Side. That will generate revenue, uh, and from that revenue, we can possibly develop a coffer specifically, uh, for affordable housing. Uh, recently, I was at an event, uh, forum in Forest Hills, and one of the attendees asked about the Challenge Fund. Uh, the Challenge Fund was a program that assisted, uh, individuals in becoming home, homeowners locally. But again, in, in a dwindling economy and being that we're facing, possibly facing a recession within the next two years or so, and the, the budget fit pitfalls that are gonna take place here in the city of Tampa because of what we owe in debt. We have to find ways to, uh, fund these type of programs, specifically affordable housing. Uh, how we do that, uh, I don't believe that the city of Tampa, uh, should be raising milit- militar rates or, uh, taxes. We, we just had a, a tax increase, uh, to help our schools, uh, as well as to promote, uh, transit here locally. I don't think this will be beneficial for the city to put, uh, this particular idea on the, in the pockets of our taxpayers. That may be difficult. Uh, however, I do believe that there's ways that we can actually generate, uh, revenues into our, our city coffers. Um, and, and I know it's not, it may not be feasible to a lot, developers may not like this aspect, but ending the CRAs in downtown Tampa and Channel Side may actually generate a lot of money. But ending the CRAs in downtown Tampa and Channel Side may actually generate a lot of money uh for the city of Tampa. And that way we can fund not just uh affordable housing, but any other uh budget shortfall that we may have in the future as well.
So let's say we fund affordable housing. How do we keep it affordable? So we look at, you know, all of these areas when we're talking about revitalization and gentrification. How do we guarantee that in these areas as the city expands and revitalize and areas gentrify? That, that we're making affordable housing and, you know, affordable. Seminole Heights is a great example. There used to be a lot of affordable housing there and as it gentrifies, there's no affordable housing and people are pushed out. And eventually they're going to be pushed out into, you know, the, the county and out of the city altogether. Some people have talked about tiny homes. I've heard other people say that that's a horrible idea, you know. So once we, if we come up with the revenue, what kind of affordable housing do we build and how do we guarantee it stays affordable?
Well, I mean, uh presently there are a lot of ideas as it relates to what affordable housing looks like. Uh, what makes housing affordable is the uh individual's income. How much disposable income do they have to pay for a mortgage or even rent? Uh, so I believe that's the most important thing is to examine, uh, is our workforce able to afford. Adequate or affordable housing, even in the event that we have uh designated affordable housing. Developments taking place throughout our city as well. Uh, some neighborhoods uh have increased in property value. And, and more than likely, uh, in those particular areas, you will not see affordable housing take place. Now, I'm not sure is to uh how much uh individual would have to make to actually own a home or purchase a home. But I believe that it's uh jobs and uh employment is what's going to really determine what's affordable for that particular individual. Now, how we keep affordable housing within, you know, or build uh affordable housing in, in certain neighborhoods? Or who we even uh the city contracts to uh provide those particular uh homes as well. It is very important. Uh, I believe that there are multiple agencies throughout our county or city. Uh, one would be the Habitat for Humanity. They can build homes and uh there's a Habitat for Humanity home, uh, just, it was just recently built, not far from, on the same, well, same street. Different block, uh, but same street that I reside on in uh University Square. Uh, very nice home and I, I would like to see more homes uh come up in our area. There's a lot of homes in our, our area for sale as well. A lot of people are moving out of the area. Uh, so uh, the, eh, we're in a buyer's market or seller's market. I mean, that's really up to the homeowner to decide uh what's, what's best for them and, and their families. I've, I've seen the, uh, I've read articles about the tiny homes. I just don't believe that that's something that's feasible, especially if you are, if you're a single mother with, with three children. Tiny home may be a bit too tiny for you. It reminds me of the nursery rhyme of the uh old, old lady that lived in the shoe. Uh, so uh tiny home, I, I've seen the uh. Container homes. Uh, so there's a lot of things that are taking place uh throughout our nation. Uh, that could be uh beneficial as it relates to affordable housing. Is the, the biggest concern is what you've mentioned is how do we pay for it? And how do we keep it funding once we actually find the funding for it?
Right. Uh, complicated issues, big issues.
Very true.
Um, so let's talk a little bit about um some of the other issues. Now, I know that one of the things that caught my eye, which um I wanted to talk to you about was charter schools, right? We have a question on our questionnaire about charter schools and, you know, um, I read your answer. Um, and I wanted to discuss that a little bit more because as a certified teacher, um, and someone who cares about public education. It's a, it's a, another complex issue. Um, and stop me if I'm wrong, but it sounded like you are very. Pro people having a choice for education, right? In different communities. And that's how it's kind of been marketed as school choice. Like, why shouldn't you have a choice where your child goes to school? But we already have school choice in Hillsborough County. So you can choice into only, almost any public school that you want to. So you are not limited to the neighborhood school. Now that does pose issues as far as. Especially in marginalized communities that don't have transportation or don't have the time or luxury to transfer your student over to. You know, an area that's farther away. Um, but we do have school choice. I just want to clarify that. So my concern is, is that on purpose, the legislation and the national message. From people who want to privatize education has purposely been to set obstacles and demonize public education. And take away as much resources as they possibly can to create a huge inequality. So that they can go into communities that struggle the most and sell the school choice, which are really, even if they're not publicly. If they're not for profit, they still have admission boards that don't, aren't standard, so they don't have to take any student. So they're private boards that can set their own rules and regulations of admittance or who they're going to let in. So my concern is because they've created this drastic need for people to feel like their only option is to. Choice into a charter school, that they're making it easier to privatize education that will actually eventually hurt. A lot of the communities that feel like they're their only choice. Um, by lowering the standard of education, already now they've passed something at the state legislation where charter schools don't have to hire. Um, teachers that have four-year educate, that, that have college educations, they can hire them right out of high school. Which eventually means they're going to lower the pay, um, so that they can pay them closer to daycare workers. And I feel like it's, they're abusing communities instead of t- mandating that the inequalities that we have in public school be changed. And fix our public schools, they're offering this private choice. So that they really undermine the faith in pu- uh, public education and they eventually turn it in for a profit business. So that's my concern. But I also see concerns about, you know, people who live in communities that feel like they don't have another choice. You know, their schools have not been somewhere where they can safely save their children or send their children or feel like they have access to, to education. So I do understand the concept between wanting to give people choice, but those are my concerns. So tell me, based on those concerns, how that affects kind of your view of school choice and charter schools?
Right. And thank you for, it's an excellent question. Uh, uh, my uh daughter. Stepdaughter, she actually attends a charter school, uh, Legacy Preparatory Academy. Um, and I'm familiar with Legacy Preparatory Academy when it was a uh private school. Uh, it started out, out as uh. I'm sorry, it, the name slips me at the moment. Mount Pleasant Middle School. I'm sorry. Uh, and uh, and that was a, a, a school that was developed by a church. Uh, it became uh Legacy Preparatory Academy. Uh, and I remember working with uh Mount Pleasant Middle. Uh, about uh civic engagement and this was something that they implemented uh as a part of their curriculum. Uh, and civic engagement uh has, was just recently a ballot initiative to make sure that every school. Uh, within the state of Florida has some type of a civic engagement uh curriculum or component. I believe that uh school choice, uh, and the, the parents should have a choice as to uh where, what schools their children uh should attend. And what a quality uh education looks like for them. Of course, uh, a charter school may not necessarily be the option for everyone. It could be a private school, uh, it could be uh homeschooling. I mean, so there's a lot of different options on the table when you, when you speak about school choice. Or they can continue to have their, their child go to a public school. Uh, I believe that the, the biggest uh and, and probably the most. Uh, disheartening thing about charter schools is how they are funded uh through private entities or corporations. Uh, to where that these corporations are using charter schools uh as tax havens to uh, to facilitate or to hide their money. So they're, they're not taxed. Uh, so, and a, and a lot of the charter schools that um I'm speaking about. Are, are, aren't charter schools that fit that particular, what I call a franchise charter school. Uh, so independent charter schools that aren't, you know, operating under this particular umbrella of a franchise charter school. They usually don't see, you know, usually don't see the same type of uh. Financial contributions to those type of charter schools than you do the, the, the ones that sit under this umbrella as a, what I quote unquote, call a franchise. That you probably see throughout the state of Florida. They may have a charter school here in Tampa, one in uh Miami, uh, one in Orlando. So those are franchise charter schools. And I believe that uh those type of charter schools probably do a disservice because of just of the funding source. And how they utilize these particular schools uh to uh hide or, you know, hide or as a tax haven. Uh, for, for incomes.
But all charter schools divert public funds.
Right. Well, each student has a specific dollar amount that follows them to the school that they attend. Now, uh, I don't, i- is there a, a massive number of children that are migrating from. Uh, public school to charter schools? Very well be, very, that very well may be the, the, the case. However, look at the uh communities as to where uh the students who attend charter schools come from. You spoke about marginalized communities. Well, the majority of students that go through these charter schools, do they fit that demographic of a mar- marginalized community? Uh, even within the city of Tampa, the majority or, or all of the magnet schools or the majority of the magnet schools that exists. Exists within our open, urban core. Uh, so that means that we're busing uh students from one area of, of Tampa or the county. Into uh participate in this magnet program in our suit, in our city uh within the urban core. Uh, there's Orange Grove, there's uh Feral, there's Middleton, uh, there's Hillsborough, there's Jefferson. I can go on and on with the list of schools that are quote unquote magnet schools that provides a, a specific uh course of study. Uh, to attract students to it. As, as far as private schools, uh, there are several throughout our area as well. Uh, probably more affordable for individuals, but I do understand that they offer scholarships as well. I went to private school uh my, for first and second grade, uh, St. Peter Claver, uh, which is a historic landmark. Uh, I hope it remains. Uh, it's, it's always has, it has its funding issues, you know, uh, uh, from year to year. But with, with that, with that being the case, I believe that our charter schools should, should uh, is a choice. Uh, taking the money away from the public sector, I believe it's, 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 it's unfortunate that that's how the, it's structured. I mean, if, if, if a parent could have worked to send their child to a private school. And they're from a uh, a low income community or a marginalized community, it's kind of difficult to uh share with that parent. Hey, this is the best option for your child to go to this particular public school because it's in your neighborhood. Because if you look at the quality of education, every school in our district has a score. And um, I'm not sure that parents want to send their child to their neighborhood school if it has a C score. And they can send them to a charter school in the same area that has a score of A.
But so here's my question to that, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but charter schools can only have a capacity of so much, right? So then there's still going to be people in that community that actually don't get the choice. Because that charter school is going to fill to capacity and not be able to offer that to every person who lives in that area. And then we're diverting those funds and we're not demanding that instead of privatizing education with charter schools. That we actually fix the inequalities in public school. So the people who don't make it into that charter school through the private board or just through capacity, aren't left with no choice. Because if it's a choice, it's always going to be somebody's first choice, but then the people who's, who, who don't make it into that first draft. Then they're left on the outskirts with, instead of, you know, with, instead of actually fixing and demanding quality public education in those communities.
Well, um, uh, just so the uh listeners, uh, I'm running for Tampa City Council.
Fair enough. That's very true. You just, you just got my passion up with that one, but I, I am glad that you made that distinction. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Not, not a problem. But with that, I, I, I do understand, uh, and I, I hear the passion. As it relates to uh charter schools publicly. How do, how do we uh as uh citizens fix this problem? If we continue to allow our state legislature uh to tell us what's best for our students. And not the parents, I believe that's where we continue to have the problem.
I agree, I agree. And I'm glad that you pointed that out because I do get passionate about that issue that isn't always in your scope. So let's move on to a different issue. In talking about this, you know, kind of one thing that I always struggle with, um, when I talk to people. Who have a very strong faith-based, um, you know, faith-based part of their, their platforms or just, you know, part of their personalities. Is the separation between church and state, um, because that's a struggle, right? Um, and we want to make sure the reason we have separation of church and state is so that anybody who's faith-based doesn't feel that there's one. Religion that's prioritized or feel discriminated against because of their religion. So as someone who's deeply faithful, um, and righteous, I remember you using that term. Um, how do you see uh that coming into play, especially like as an elected official?
Right. Well, um, I believe that it, it causes a elected official or even just the, you know, average person to have. Uh, some type of principle uh in life. To have some type of principle in life and uh have a purpose in life. Uh, and to treat uh mankind uh fairly and, and just uh and righteous. Uh, I, uh, I have a, a conversation with a, a lot of individuals and they ask me, what's my political affiliation? Uh, it is a Democrat and I am a Democrat and I would like to say that I'm a liberal Democrat at that. And in that, I mean, liberal in the biblical sense, which means to be a righteous person and to share that righteousness with humanity as well. Uh, so of course, with the, the liberalism as it, the definition as it relates to politics has changed. Uh, but the definition of liberal, of a liberal.
Are you saying Jesus was a liberal?
Uh, well, according to scripture, he was. So.
But would you uphold, uphold separation between church and state if there were laws that came out?
Our, our constitution speaks to freedom of, of religion. Uh, it doesn't say specifically that that's uh Christianity. It doesn't say specifically that that's uh Hinduism or Islam. It's, it's freedom of religion, or if you choose not to believe or have, or you're agnostic or even atheist. Uh, believe that that's what the constitution calls for. Uh, and as an elected official, uh, it's not my uh position to force my beliefs. On uh my constituency. Uh, again, the constitution calls for freedom of religion, uh, separation of church and state. Uh, it is, is, is prominent in our, in our country. Um, uh, I, I will say this, it's funny because in seminary, I learned uh that the stump speech came from. Pastors traveling throughout the countryside, sharing a message about salvation. So uh, they would stand on a stump. And give a speech, a rousing speech to uh wind souls to uh Christ. So even the campaign meeting or that we hear about, uh, or even as it relates to politics. This was, this was, uh, this was something that was uh shaped by uh the uh history of uh Christianity. In the United States of America. Uh, but I, I'm opposed to uh anyone forcing their beliefs. Uh, from a position of an elected official, uh, as to there's one way uh of, is one, only one way of faith. Everyone has that decision to make for themselves.
So in line with that, um, and I'm trying to focus on things that are more city council related. Um, we recently had a measure to ban um gay conversion therapy. And I know that it's a struggle with a lot of Judeo-Christian religions or just religious people in general. When we talk about LGBTA rights. But as an elected official, that's, those are things that are going to come up um before you as a councilman. So tell me, you know, a little bit about your commitment to supporting the LGBTQ community.
Right. Uh, I believe I received this question on a questionnaire and, 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 and route here, I was listening to talk radio and this was something that they were discussing as well. Um, now, as it relates to, uh, as it relates to uh this particular type of uh therapy. Some may believe that psychology works. Uh, some may believe that prayer and fasting works. Uh, I don't believe that uh, an elected official should be put in a position to determine what's best for. Another individual's life. Uh, quality of life is very important, but I do believe that we should have the choice. Uh, whether you, if you're a person of faith or if you're not a person of faith, if you don't have a religion at all. That you should have a choice to determine if uh psychology works for you as a form of therapy. Or if prayer works for you as a form of therapy. That's your choice.
Or if no therapy.
Or if no therapy at all, right?
So would you say that you're committing to making sure that LGBTA have equality rights when it comes to. Rights to marry or any other rights that we're asking?
Of course. If, I mean, that, that's already been something that's uh been passed down from our federal government. I do believe that uh, the uh, uh, gay or queer community has a, a right to get married if that they so choose. I hope the, uh, I do hope that you find the person that you love. Uh, and that you will remain with that person for uh the rest of your waking life. Divorce is high as well.
Similar to that, you hope that all of, all, all people feel, right?
Right, right. Uh, because uh divorce is very real in our country.
Are you speaking from experience? How about adult use uh marijuana? Do you think that that's something that should be legal in the state of Florida?
Uh legalized and taxed.
Legalized and taxed? Legalized and taxed. How about there's a initiative to go on the ballot and it will eventually come down to cities, I believe. But like expansion for Medicare, Medicare for All, talking about healthcare being a human rights. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I'm presently employed by a company that's a contractor for our centers for Medicaid and Medicare services. So I speak to, I'm a claim specialist and I speak to a lot of our seniors day in and day out about their complaints about Medicare, just the services and and some of them applaud the services that Medicare provides. Is Medicare for All feasible would be my question. Where do we get the funding for this? Because all of these things, all of these grand ideas that we would have about policy, it all comes back to a dollar. Where do we find the dollars for these ideas that we have? At Medicare for All, I've this is a something that I see a lot of the presidential hopefuls as well as our just recent our governor's race as well with Andrew and and Mr. DeSantis. I'm sorry, the Honorable Andrew Gillum.
I know why you're saying.
With that being, with and this is something that's it's I believe that healthcare should be governed by our federal government. I mean, we have a neighboring country that's able to provide it to its citizens and that's Canada. There's countries around the world that's able to provide that as well. I believe that where the biggest debate or or the fallout comes is in the regulation and in companies that provide health coverage. I think that's where the biggest fight lies. I mean, because these are are lobbyists with bankrolled with a lot of money. And oftentimes that money influences our elected officials. And healthcare is is something that's that should be that should be governed appropriately and provided to our 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 citizenship. I mean, I'm sorry, our citizens as well, citizenship.
Citizenship, citizens, that's okay. So I know that I always ask people about workers' rights. Not people, but people who come on the show, candidates. And as recently, one of the city can city council or mayoral candidates had mentioned privatizing some of the workforce. And that has caused quite a stir for, you know, workers' rights, unions, people who, you know, believe in supporter work supporting workers' rights and how privatization of anything can come to, you know, destruction for those rights. How committed to you are you to workers' rights and unions and making sure that we're not privatizing, you know, our city workers and other things to make sure that we're cutting corners and finding ways in the budget by taking away workers' rights?
Right. Well, I'm all for unions. I believe that organizing as an employee to make sure that workers have rights is is key to our democracy and key to our workforce as well. I wouldn't support the privatization of a department within our city. Because then we're again, it goes back to a dollar. Where are we going to find the money if we do privatize a particular department with the city of Tampa? How do we continue to pay this particular corporation that's going to be providing this particular service? So no, I'm totally against privatizing any department within the city of Tampa.
All right. Thank you. Now, one of the issues that isn't necessarily so we all will try not to spend too much time on it in your control is gun reform. It's a hot ticket item. I like to ask my guests about it. We have a our state caucus president is very, very, very passionate about that. And we have a lot of questions on our questionnaire about it. And I know that it seemed like that was a point of contention because you recognize the law as it is and you want people to, you know, have the ability to feel like they can defend themselves is what it seemed like. But we're also talking about, you know, how you've had a personal experience with gun violence and how that gun violence, you know, regardless of people's rights to defend themselves, has kind of gotten out of control. And that stand your ground can be used, you know, almost as a racist policy as we've seen with Markeith McLaughlin, is that Markeith McLaughlin? So so tell me about gun reform in your own words and, you know, where we think, how you think we need it. And I also want to ask about the school marshal program.
Okay. All right. Well, as it relates to gun reform, I believe that our citizens should have to the right to protect themselves with the firearm, protect their families as well as their property. As it relates to the preemptive, I mean, I don't believe our current mayor signed the signed off on a lawsuit to sue the our state legislator or our state government to have that reexamine or or rewritten, I should say. This is this is a touchy subject because of the NRA and all of the violence is taking place throughout our state and throughout our nation. It's unfortunate that we continue to hear about these mass shootings or even individual shootings that take place in our locale as well.
Do you think that in such a heavy gun forward country that not in any way taking away people's rights, but that sensible gun reform is something that we need to demand? Because, I mean, are there really needs in defending yourself to have high capacity weapons that can cause so much damage? Are you ever going to be in a situation where you really need that sort of access to a weapon to defend yourself? I guess is where the question comes in.
Right. Well, it's it's I believe that this really comes down to manufacturers. Will our government, our federal government step in and say, hey, you can't continue to produce these type of things? What type of regulation will be put in place to curb or deter manufacturers from from building or or manufacturing these type of weapons or accessories for a weapon?
So that is some sort of a form.
Right. Right. I think that's where I think that's where the conversation has has to take place. What can we do to limit the manufacturing of these type of?
So less less reform in citizens' rights as far as buying and purchasing and more responsibility on the manufacturing and regulation on the manufacturing side?
Right. Because I mean, the majority of gun manufacturers are probably manufacturing these weapons for our law enforcement agencies as well as our military. So once they produce these particular, you know, whether it's a bump stock or a high capacity, high high capacity clip for for a rifle or anything along those lines. What's the reason that they this manufacturer even produced this particular accessory for this particular model gun? I believe that that's where the conversation, can we ask the manufacturer, well, why did you make this? For what reason? And if there says, well, their reason would be, well, well, because it makes money. Because there's there's a there's a there's a market for it. And that market exists within our federal government. That market exists within our law enforcement. And I believe that the people probably see that, well, if the military or our law enforcement can own it, why can't I? That believe that's where the debate really lies because people are seeing that, well, the military has this type of this type of rifle or law enforcement has this type of rifle. I should be able to have the same type of rifle to protect myself from my family and my property.
So do you think we need to regulate that?
How do we do that? That's that's how do we do that?
All right. So I don't want to take away from that, but it sounds like we could discuss that for a while. And you are running for city council, not state legislation. So I'm just going to ask you two more questions. And then the lightning round is done. So we usually kind of steer away from this question because it's not up for debate. We can't, from what I've been told, especially with the mayoral heavy government, become a sanctuary city. But, you know, immigration is on the table and a lot of citizens are especially, you know, in Florida where we have so much immigration. It's a thing, you know, from Wyoming mama, where we have so many, you know, migrant families to South Florida. To Orlando now where we have a huge, not that they're immigrants, but Puerto Rican population. So even though we can't become a sanctuary city, we can do things to help, you know, become more immigration friendly. So give me a little bit of your thoughts as far as immigration is concerned and our duty to enforce immigration laws.
Right. Well, I believe it's something that needs to be streamlined to make it easier for migrants coming to state of to to the America to become citizenship, become become citizens. And I believe that I don't know what the process is as to how long it takes to become a citizen. But we need to look at ways to streamline that particular process to where that it's easier and faster for individuals to become citizens. And maybe we won't have the drones individuals coming to our country illegally against the building of any type of wall. I don't believe that it's a I don't believe it's a crisis as to what's being displayed in the media. But I do believe that it needs to be addressed. And what is the reason that migrants are coming here illegally is because they're probably able to find work. So if they're able to find work, employers can't hire an individual who's here illegally. So that means that this employer is paying this individual under the table and off the books. And so that's not something that can even be regulated or taxed. So that's monies that are being diverted from our our tax base and as well as, you know, I mean, how do how do we even enforce the fines or levy a fine against an employer that hires people or individuals that are here illegally? How do we do that? What does that look like? And and is it is it a is it something that we can actually have one of our state legislatures or even one of our our federal representatives, whether it's one of our senators or our congressmen or women in the area to address to find out, okay, why aren't we going after companies or individuals that actually hire migrants that are here illegally? I believe that's what other reason would an individual have to come to a country if they don't have a means to take care of themselves?
So you would want to find them to make sure that we're holding workers up to a certain level so that workers are getting paid enough so that they can't abuse that system. But in general, you support immigration and an easier pathway to becoming an immigrant.
Of course, of course. And it's and it's 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 imperative that we look at how the 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 business community, how they hire migrants that come here illegally as well.
Okay. So now what I want to kind of pivot to, especially since I feel like and I could be totally wrong. It's like it's one of the things when you're talking about empowering neighborhoods and empowerment is racial justice and criminal justice reform. It's something I kind of like to end with and talk about. And it's interesting that candidates of color always have a lot more thoughts and a lot more well thought out plans when it comes to this and better answers and my and my opinion. But, you know, tell me as especially of a candidate of color, when we're living in a world, you know, whether you think that, you know, racism is a problem within our city and how we can address problems of racism and criminal justice reform.
Right. Well, culturally, the founding of America itself, when the constitution was written, it wasn't written in the mind that African Americans or people of color were, well, I would specifically say black people were citizens. We were looked upon as property. And I believe that just over the years and over the course of history, we've yet to forget that this has been the founding of America and how America was actually what the principles that America was founded upon. Of course, we know the history of the Civil War. We know the history of Reconstruction, Jim Crow, Black Codes, the Civil Rights Movement. So many of these things, and even with the Civil Rights Movement, this was what, the late 60s? I still have people in my family that are living that can remember the days that they could not vote. How that was illegal, how it was illegal to read or even be able to read or write for that for that standpoint. So as it relates to criminal justice and reform, the the proposals that I've heard as it relates to the prison system, that's on a federal level. And what I believe people don't realize is that what's taking place on a federal level doesn't necessarily trickle down to our state level as well. So how, what does reform in our state look like? The prison industry or the prison industrial complex is is expanding in the state of Florida. Prisons, private private prisons are replacing state run prisons. Criminal justice reform is 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 key, but it's it's on both sides. It's behind the wall in the prison as well as in our courts. What what things can we implement to make sure that we're not sending a person to prison because they're addicted to a drug? Why not send them to a treatment versus sending them to a to a prison to where they're more than likely not going to receive the treatment that they need to return to society to society and become a model citizen? I mean, we have organizations here locally that would be able to assist in that process like Daco. You have A Brown Ministries that assists with reentry. So it's it's tough to to.
To find an easy solution.
Right. To find it to find an easy solution that's actually going that everybody would be able to agree upon. That's that's the difficult and but that's the discourse of politics. We have to make tough decisions. However, I believe our commonalities is what's what brings us together as as a well brings humanity together. Humanity together and that we can actually build the community and live out the ideals that the the constitution has afforded us. It's unfortunate that we still have racism in our society. And I can't say that there's a policy or initiative that anything that can be written or placed into law that will take that away. This is something that has been embedded and in into American culture. Racism exists, prejudice exists, although they're two different things. How do I I just don't believe and honestly, I just don't believe that there's a way that we can legislate morality.
Right. Yeah. I noticed your concern that implicit bias training isn't going to take away the racism that we're concerned with.
Right. I mean, if this is an individual who has a bias towards a person of color or or a woman or a or a gay person, right? I don't believe that these are these are these are things that if I go to a six to eight week course, that this is necessarily going to change my outlook or my perspective on life. I believe that that's a choice that a person will have to make inwardly. How does a person, how does a person stop being racist?
Do you think like, and I always ask this, do you think community policing, like working inside one specific community where you get to know people? And, you know, you break down those social barriers and you're really immersing yourself, you know, in those communities is one answer, maybe not the answer, but.
Well, I believe that's a start. I believe that's a start. I mean, if 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 you're a police officer or even a first responder, it it's imperative that you understand that you're still a citizen outside of your uniform. And building a community, if you break down the word community, it means come unite. How do we unite ourselves when you're not in your uniform versus when you're in your uniform? I believe community policing will be a start to that. And being personable with individuals that you are sworn to serve and protect. Not just look at them as participating in some type of criminal activity. If you know an officer by their first name and that officer knows you or an individual in a specific community by their first name, I believe that that goes back to what community is all about. That could actually build and and deter some of the biases that that take place. And again, this is this is this is about differences in culture, differences in upbringing and rearing and what we've what we've what we've been taught as as children, the experiences we live throughout life. But there's there's a start. I mean, and 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 this is one of those starts. I mean, and, and, and this is one of those starts of actually having a conversation, uh, having a dialogue to address some of these concerns.
Right.
Uh, because, uh, my perspective on a police shooting may be different than your perspective on a police shooting because of the lens of our culture.
True.
Or how we examine those particular things. Uh, community policing could be one of those ways. I, I just don't see. And, and honestly, uh, as it relates to the training, um, I haven't read any, uh. Studies that said that these things actually work. So are we really wasting our time and our finances?
Because there'd be changes in training as not shoot to kill, shoot to disarm as the first mechanism of, uh, when you're fearful in a situation. Are there things that may not be trying to change your bias, but actually mandate what you're allowed to do in a situation?
Right. Well, I've, I've, I attended the, uh, police, uh, Tampa Police Department's, uh, Citizen Academy. This is some years ago.
Did you get tased?
I did get tased. It's on video somewhere. I have it on DVD somewhere. And it's funny because I just mentioned this to, uh, Mike Suarez and he remembered because he got tased too.
Right. I've seen people go through.
Right, right.
Pretty crazy.
Right. So we had a conversation about that. Uh, and he, he, he did make, he did make mention of, he's like, well, remember who else was there with us? This running for mayor also who didn't get tased. I'm not going to mention the name.
Oh, my goodness. Now acquiring mine.
Right. Uh, Mike Suarez does have the DVD though. Um, and, uh, and, and at the time, it's funny because, uh. Jane Castro was chief of police then.
Right.
Uh, so.
Small town.
Right. Uh. I'm sorry. What was the question again?
Um, just changing, changing, changing the training, not necessarily the bias, but the scope of what you're able to do. I mean. Personally, I don't feel like, and I'm not a, you know, a law officer, so maybe I'm at a place to say this, that. You have to shoot to kill someone just because you feel threatened. There are lots of incidences where you can, you know, stop the suspect from being able to harm you. Without having to murder them based on some assumed action of what's going to happen. So, I mean, when I think about it, you know, I think about. Retraining in general, community policing, you know, not anything that's going to be able to change people's bias or their racist tendencies per se. But to mitigate and maybe find ways of, you know, protecting us against that, um, mindset of someone. Um, is, I guess what I kind of look for when I'm thinking about handling the problem. But again, this is a, a city election, so we don't need to go too deep into it. Um, so unless you have anything else that you wanted to talk about regarding your platform.
Just to, just to, uh, uh, you know, close out.
Right.
On the, uh, the, the training. Uh, and I, I made mention of the, the, uh, civil, uh, I'm sorry.
Oh, the right, the review.
Citizen, citizen, uh, Citizen Academy. Police Academy, uh, in regards to, uh, one of the, what my experience at, at the academy.
Right.
So, uh, one of the, one of the things that we had to do, uh, was, this is a scenario. So there was a young lady. Uh, she was sitting at a park.
Right.
Uh, she was Asian. And we went to the park and she was distraught. Uh, she was crying. And, uh, so in, in a. In an effort to comfort her, I approached her and my partner did. I forgot who my partner was at that time. But I approached her and, uh, and it, and it was just a, you know, a, a moment of where, hey. What's taking place? What's going on? Can I have a conversation with you about what's going on? So as I approached her, she went in her jacket and shot me.
Oh.
So it's kind of difficult to put emotion into that line of work.
Right.
And I believe that oftentimes it's the training that takes, that, that does away with the emotional aspect. Of dealing with another human being.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, so, and in that, those biases that that individual may have may still play a role. In that interaction with, uh, between an officer, uh, as well as a, a public citizen. It's unfortunate. Um, again, I, I would like to read any of the, uh, research studies that say that these particular trainings actually work.
Right.
Um, I just don't, I just can't phantom that there's a six to eight week training. That an individual can take that changed their whole perspective on life in general.
Sure, sure, sure.
That's comes from life experience. So, and I'm 42 years old, so I'm pretty much, I've lived a long life thus far. Um, I like to live a lot longer. Uh, and, you know, hopefully I'm able to do so.
Right.
And I, and I just think that, you know, humanity, uh, can actually, we can come together as one. And, and do some things that are out of the ordinary, uh, to accomplish, uh, an increased quality of life for us all.
All right. Well, that makes me feel empowered. Um, so on that note, again, is there anything in your platform or in your candidacy? Campaign that we haven't touched on that you want to close with?
Uh, well, I believe that we've, uh, addressed all of the issues, uh, on my platform, uh, as well as, uh, any, uh, things that. Any things that you want to, uh, ask as well of me as a candidate for Tampa City Council District Seven.
It's been a thorough interview.
Right. And I would, I would just like to ask, uh, share with your listeners, uh, to, uh, review our plan at votrobinson.com. Uh, share our plan with your friends, your neighbors, uh, and your family members, uh, to see if this is a plan that you believe would work for you. Uh, and to increase your quality of life and also empower all of District Seven. Uh, South of Fowler Avenue has gone overlooked and underserved. And I believe empowering communities for a greater Tampa is a, a message that will empower all of us and bring us together. To where that we're able to accomplish, uh, things that, uh, that haven't been done, uh, in more than, uh, 10 to 20 plus years. My name is Quentin F. Robinson. I'm your candidate for Tampa City Council District Seven, and I will hope, uh, that I will have your vote. Uh, and that you would employ me to be the next representative for City Council, uh, District Seven. I'm looking forward to, uh, working with. A, a plethora of great candidates, uh, mayoral and city council. And, uh, I believe, I believe it's going to be a, a great, uh, time for the city of Tampa. Uh, over the next four years, we can actually get some things done.
Great. So if people are very moved by this, how can they get involved in your campaign? How can they give you money? How can they? Pound the pavement for me? Tell me all the ways people can get involved.
Well, um, I'll be happy to share my, uh, contact number. It's eight one three, uh, six five eight, eighty eight seventy eight. Uh, you can reach out to me through, uh, Facebook or Instagram. Uh, my handle is at Vote Robinson twenty nineteen. Uh, on my website, votrobinson.com, you can sign up to volunteer. Uh, you can also, uh, make a contribution, uh, as well.
On your website.
On my website, uh, votrobinson.com, or you can make a contribution through, uh, the application on my, uh, Facebook page as well. Our campaign's Facebook page is Vote, is, is Robinson for City Council District Seven, Tampa, Florida. Again, the handle is at Vote Robinson twenty nineteen, both on Instagram and Facebook. Or you can follow me on LinkedIn at Q F, I'm sorry, Quentin F. Robinson.
Ooh, LinkedIn, I like that one. Um, and are you canvassing? Are you, how are you reaching voters?
Uh, we are going to start canvassing, uh, this week. Uh, we're going to be knocking on doors. Uh, feel free to join team, um, uh, empowered. Uh, if you like, just sign up to volunteer at our website or give me a call at eight one three six five eight eighty eight seventy eight. And I'll have one of my coordinators be in touch with you and we can arrange a date and we can burn calories and knock on doors.
And let's talk about the election because today's the last date of, uh, register to vote in the city elections.
Correct.
Fortunately, this will be released after this date, but I was hoping to see more candidates announcing that and begging people to, to, uh, register. But for the other timeline, um, the actual election is on March fifth.
Correct.
Uh, where people have to go to their polls. Um, do you know the dates offhand for early voting?
Uh, early voting, uh, is February twenty fifth, uh, through March third.
And people can go to participating libraries. They don't have to be in their.
Right. And I would recommend that you go to, uh, vote hillsboro.gov to get a accurate list. Of all of the early voting locations in your, in the area.
Awesome. And, uh, vote by mail has come out, so people are already trying to gather their information. So make sure that you sign the front of that. Um, and that you get it back and that you match your signature as close as you can. We don't want a, another signature debacle. Um, so, well, thank you so much for taking the time to come out here, uh, for participating in our lightning round, for. Having a platform on your website. I always appreciate that. It makes my job so much easier. Um, and for sharing with us. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
For having me. I really appreciate, uh, the opportunity, uh, to share our plan, uh, and our message with all the voters in District Seven. And, uh, just, uh, all, all of the, all of your listeners, period. I'll be, I believe this is a very, uh, important outlet.
Absolutely.
For us all, uh, to, to understand and to discuss our political discourse here locally.
Yes, yes. It's been a pleasure. Good luck in your race.
Thank you so much.
And to all of our listeners, thank you so much for tuning in. Uh, we appreciate it. Hopefully you made it to the end of this interview. Uh, if you ever have any feedback or comments, you can always email me, uh, jessica vaughn. At J Vaughn V as in Victor, A U G H N, the number thirty three zero at gmail dot com. Again, thank you for our listeners. Thank you so much for our guests and have a great evening.
Poor day.